All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. And as we typically do, we begin with our implication led by Vice Chairman Helms.
Thanks, if you bow please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather tonight through the county's business. Give us guidance to conduct ourselves so that we are pleasing to you. Also help this board to conduct our business so that we were honest and true representatives of our citizens. God please be with those families that were affected by the tragedy in Las Vegas last night. Help them find comfort in your love and caring. So many times we take for granted the first responders and the military that take care and protect us on a daily basis. Please give special protection to them for their service and keep them safe. Finally, dear God, grant us humility to always seek you, your will, in all that we do and say. In thy name we pray. Amen.
If you want us for the pledge, if you'd like to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our throne.
All right. That will take us to item number three, the public hearing for FY 2019, 5311 non-urbanized area formula program grant application.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. This is an annual grant that Union County applies for as it relates to transportation services within our community. The grant we receive is $135,880. We get a portion from the state of $23,471, and then we have a local match of $28,122. The process does require that we conduct a public hearing.
All right. We'll therefore open the public hearing. Anybody have any questions, comments? There's no one signed up to speak. In fact, we'll close the public hearing. That'll take us to item number four, public hearing for Gulston Technologies.
Mr. Potte.
Commissioners, Mayor Jacoto, it's my pleasure to bring for you tonight an opportunity with a company that's been here for a long time, Gulston Technologies. It's an economic development incentive grant request by them for what we have referred to as Project Quantum. Gulston Technologies has been in Union County since 1969, located on Johnson Street in Monroe. They currently employ 120 folks, and those people make a very, very good wage. They produce surface modification products used in the manufacturing of textiles, personal care items, and household goods. The company is considering the location here in Union County for a two-phase expansion, and that project would total capital investment of just over $35 million, $35,700. Phase one of the project is 6.2 million, including the construction of a 50,000-square-foot structure that will initially function as a distribution space but then convert into potentially manufacturing after that. The targeted start date is in 2018. In this phase, there would be a minimum of three jobs created. Phase two is a $29.5 million project that will involve the purchase and installation of manufacturing equipment. That project is targeted for 2020, and the first phase will have a minimum of five new jobs created with it. The company has indicated that incentives are very, very important to the -- important factors, excuse me, in their decision process, and we are in competition with several locations in the southeast, including Tennessee and South Carolina. Tonight, we're requesting two separate economic development grants for each phase of the project. Phase one would be a Step Three Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount of $170,500 over a five-year period beginning in FY 2021. Based on the county's tax office, Union County Tax Office's appraised value each year on the company's anticipated investment of $6.2 million, the annual tax base would generate $242,110 over that grant period. This is a deviation. We are going to a Step Three. This would typically, by the guidelines, qualify for a Step Two, but because of the company and how important they are to our community, and we've talked about this, we're moving up a step and putting that as a Step Three for this phase of the project. And so that is the first grant we would consider. The second grant is for a Step Three Economic Development Incentive Grant, totaling $875,000, again over five years, but beginning in fiscal year 2023. And then this is based on the investment of $29.5 million. Based on that investment, holding all the things constant, it would generate new tax to the county of $1,151,975 over that same period. So as you lump these together, the cost-benefit analysis, for the first 10 years, the grant period is roughly 20 to 1, with a ratio of 6 to 1 for the life of the project. We're also looking to bring this project to the City Council in Monroe tomorrow night at their regular meeting for a very similar grant scenario. So therefore, the economic development staff recommend that we would like to award, do a simultaneous award of two separate Step Three Performance-Based Economic Development Incentive Grants to Gulston Technologies for a combined total of $995,500. At this time, I'd also like to recognize Mr. Fred Edwards, President and COO of Gulston, as well as his staff. They're available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Potte. Any questions, gentlemen? Nope. No one? We don't have anyone signed up to speak, and therefore we'll close this public hearing. Thank you all for being here. That'll take us to our informal comments. We have one individual, Nick Nixon, who has signed up to speak.
I'm overpassing, Mr. Knight.
All right, Mr. Nixon, we'll remove you, and that will conclude informal comments. That'll take us to additions, deletions, and/or adoption of the agenda. Vice Chairman?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that at the end of our comments tonight, that we go into closed session, one to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege in accordance with GS 143-31811, and to establish or to instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the amount of compensation or other material items of an employee contract or proposed employee contract pursuant to GS 143-31811, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee pursuant to GS 143-31811.
Okay. Any other additions and/or deletions or approval, motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve is amended.
All right. All in.
Is that one item? You want me to mention that?
Yes, if you would. Oh, yes, I know what you're talking about.
We did receive a call from Mark Strickland, who is the Deputy Superintendent over Operations at Union County Public Schools today, requesting that we pull item -- I'm not going to be able to find the number.
Item number 16.
Yes, 16 from the agenda. They requested it not be considered this evening, and it was put on the agenda at their request originally.
Okay.
I apologize.
Motion stands.
All right, very good. We have a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? All right. And that will take us to the consent agenda.
Motion to accept is presented.
All right, we have a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay. That will take us to Old Business, item number 15.
You all have had a public hearing on this, as well as a discussion at your last meeting. This is the Waxaw-Nixon conditional rezoning, and staff is available to answer or any additional questions you may have or provide any additional information you may request. I don't think we have a presentation this evening unless you have some additional information.
Well, no. One of the things we've discussed with legal is it probably be a really good idea that we read aloud the conditions and have the developer formally agree in public to that before you take an action. Obviously, certainly turn it down, but we need to make sure the conditions are established. And the board could certainly have interaction with the developer if he wants to about those conditions, but we think that would be important that we read the conditions aloud.
Very good, please do so.
All right, thank you. So, "All conditions contained on sheets RZ 1.0, RZ 1.1, and RZ 1.2 of the most recent conceptual plan submitted to Union County Planning Department dated 6/18/17 and the following specific conditions. Petitioner will comply with any off-site improvements as required by NC DOT. The petitioner will install six-foot sidewalks along the entire frontage and crosswalks as applicable at the intersections. The petitioner will establish an enhanced Class C buffer." This is the Waxaw's determination of Class C buffer, "abutting all boundary with existing residential utilizing additional evergreen plantings. Petitioner will conform to architectural theme, appearance, and quality of existing development at the Cuthbertson Road-Providence Road-Kinsington Road intersection. Petitioner will -- the erosion control and stormwater management will follow the more stringent measures between Union County and the Waxaw as determined by Union County Stormwater Staff. And finally, the petitioner will install mast-arm poles for the traffic signal at the entrance to the development." On the first part, I want to clarify that there are a lot of items on the plan which are extremely difficult to articulate without having the map, so what we've done is refer to the plan and the date, so if there's ever a question, we can always pull that out, and that's what it refers to. So that's why that condition is written that way. I'll answer any questions you might, and the developer's here, obviously he'll need to state whether he agrees with those conditions or not.
Mr. Matthews, can you cover the condition after the enhanced buffer?
All right. The condition after enhanced buffer is "conform to the architectural theme, appearance, and quality of existing development at the Cuthbertson-Providence-Kinsington intersection." This was requested by Waxaw. Has to do with materials and sort of the design look of that. It's my understanding the developer had no issue with that in the previous meeting. I think he stated he was okay with that. We're just stipulating that that would be a condition.
And the buffer piece, that's the one that's consistent with Waxaw's request?
That is correct. The buffer is a Class C buffer under their regulations.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews, can you also, and maybe I apologize if I didn't hear, the 75,000-square-foot building is committed to be a...
Discount club.
Discount club or a fee-based club. Is there any commitment to which club we'll be coming?
No, sir.
Okay.
So that is actually included on the top one, so I did not spell that out specifically, but within the written conditions and the map plan itself, because it refers to a specific building, it is called out there that that building, 75,000 square feet, can only be a discount club. No commitment to whether it's a Sam's or a BJ's or something of that nature, but it could not be a Target or a Walmart. Those are not considered a for-pay or a for-membership-type club.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do you think prohibit him from being in school?
Well, under the current plan, he'd have to come back to go through a school, because the plan is as shown. So it wouldn't prohibit him from coming back, but the current plan, no, sir, would not show a school. It would not be approved for a school.
The school would be buying, right?
I'm sorry?
It would be only the portion of that that the school would be buying.
That would be correct. If the school purchased property, they'd have to come back for that specific piece that they were applying for. All right, I'm self-aware.
Any other questions for Mr. Matthews? All right, we'll hear from the developer.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we are in agreement to what Mr. Matthews outlined. It was raised at two or three meetings ago, I forget exactly what, but would we be willing to entertain schools, libraries, and public buildings? Because the commission can set the standards, as Brian specified, it's negotiable between the commission and the developer. We're willing, if the commission so wished, to include schools, libraries, and public buildings.
What?
Can I clarify something very quickly?
You may. So, under this particular item, because a school is so different from the original proposal, if the board wished for that to be the case, we would then recommend that actually it be sent all the way back through the very beginning of the process, a community meeting, planning board recommendation, and then back to the commission for another public hearing. So it would be our recommendation that you take action on the plan as it is, and then if developer were to make an agreement with a school, then you could come back at some later date and go through that process with the school. Because unfortunately, a school is so much different than the current plan. So that would be our recommendation. Doesn't prohibit the property owner and the developer from coming to that agreement, but they would have to go back through the process again.
Thank you. Any questions for the developer? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we -- I don't have a word here. Consider the request adopt the applicable consistency statement for the project for the rezoning. Need any more information on that?
Yes, we need to know if there's an approval or denial of the rezoning request.
Approve the zoning request.
That's with the applicable conditions.
With the applicable conditions.
All right. We have a motion. Any discussion? Commissioner Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank Mr. Rosenberg for his efforts here. He's made every effort to comply with the requests and the wishes of the town of Waxaw and the people. Board here certainly commend him for that. Developers get a bad name sometimes, but you've certainly worked hard to make this project happen. A couple of things, when we have these zoning requests, I tend to try and rely on the planning board, and I think this town, the planning board was split right down the middle on this project. The other thing, and I guess maybe I'm showing my age, but I learned the other day about what's called the Amazon effect. There's a lot of talk right now about the Amazon effect and its impact on retail, so I have some concerns about this particular plan and the idea of the buyer's club, so I will be voting to deny the petition.
All right. Vice Chairman?
Yes, I expressed my concern in an earlier meeting. I have been on the CARPO, the Traffic Planning Group, for about four years now, and traffic is an extreme concern. And I think Mr. Rosenberg told us last time that it would generate 8,657 automobiles, movement, in and out of this neighborhood, and it'd be going on the Providence Road, which is a bottleneck today. And I can tell you from the planning that I experience on a regular basis, we're probably looking at at least 10 years before that part of the road is widened to the point. It creates extreme concern for me to put in the situation. I think also Mr. Rosenberg talked about 18 months for completion, so there would look to be anywhere from six to eight years that you would have this bottleneck to contend with. So from that standpoint, I think it's a very impressive development, and I agree with Commissioner Simpson that you've done everything possible to try to adhere to us. This is something that the traffic is something this board cannot remedy in the immediate future, so I'll have to be voting not to support this motion.
Mr. Lance Simpson?
I've had numerous discussions on this, and it's not a clear case of what's good and what's not. We have a lot of residential in the county. I look at it as this gives me a known. I know exactly what the impact is on this development. I know what the impact is on Providence. The developer has agreed to some conditions to protect the residents behind the property as well as to provide some other improvements that I think are needed, and I think the town of Waxaw and its residents have asked for. When I look at the option, would be additional residential, which I think has got us in the situation that we're in right now in Providence. I simply see this as the best option that's out there right now, so I will be supporting it.
Mr. Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Lance Simpson on this. We had several conversations with people from the town. We had several emails from people of the town, and I tried to contact several of them back, and when I put the option before them that we heard, 140 townhomes versus commercial, they said, "Well, commercial would be the lesser," you know, because just like our staff has told us, creates less traffic. There's not 300 new cars on the roads, it's existing vehicles on the road. And then when I asked them the option of a school, they liked that even better, of course, and I know that you're in discussions with Union Day School right now. I hope that bears some fruit. So that's the reason I support this. You know, we're looking at 300 additional vehicles on the road and impact to the water, sewer versus commercial, which we've all heard, we have to have more commercials. So everything that we've heard, everything that we've been presented about issues with utilities and issues with commercial versus residential, that's my support for this. And again, I hope you continue to have discussions with Union Day, but locking this in to not be residential townhomes makes sense to me.
What?
And I will just mention that I do support this after, obviously, lengthy public hearings and hearing from a number of the folks that would be directly impacted by the area. But as someone who has sat on the Economic Development Council for this county for the last five years, and, you know, having recently heard the Wingate Study where the disproportionate alignment of residential versus commercial, I can in good faith vote to allow more residential when we have an opportunity to put commercial into this county. So with that, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Two? All right. That will take us to item number 17.
Yes, Commissioners, your August 7 meeting, we had some discussion as it related to, I believe it was Commissioner Jerry Simpson who brought it up, as it related to the Fire Commission potentially establishing a public safety committee. And as part of that discussion, staff received a direction that by the October 2 meeting, you wanted a status update on the Hemby Bridge Indian Trail Stallings fire study that was being conducted. I've had some brief discussions with Chief Johnny Bythe, who is over the Chiefs Association, and Mr. -- Chief Bythe is here to provide you with an update.
All right, welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the update on the study is, and let me just say one thing before we start, that's lake parks included in that as well.
Oh, thank you.
So, yeah, let's make sure they get there mentioned. We don't have the results back yet. I did speak with the consultant last week, and they're planning to, he's supposed to get me some dates this week that they're coming. I haven't gotten those yet. So he has all the data, he's going through that. He hadn't made any more requests for data, so he must be satisfied with what he's got. So we're just kind of at his mercy waiting on him to come back. So that's where the study is.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Bythe?
Well, you make me nervous when it writ. His pleasure for him to come back, because this is a major item for us to discuss funding for your departments in the county. And as you're well aware, this has been delayed several years already. Not as much the funding model to get fixed. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
So if you can apply some influence to the gentleman, because we need to get this resolved before budget cycle, which starts, what?
It's already started.
It's already started, I know that.
It's starting November.
Yeah, February is when the board starts getting more involved.
The thing about it is, is what we've got before us is going to take a lot longer than a couple of months to figure out what's best for all involved.
I'm very confident that we'll have something back in the next four to six weeks. I mean, I can't imagine it being any more than that. And I'll know more this week when I get those dates, be happy to share that, you know, with the manager or you guys, whatever you want. I mean, it is what it is. I can't really give you the answer because I don't have it.
I understand.
So, you know, but I will say that this is the same company that conducted the one in 2010 for the county. So there, it's not like I'm the only one he's working on. You know, he has, it's a considerably large company, which is, happens to be our insurance company as well. So they provide this as part of their services, as a consulting service. So, you know, I do, I did call him last week, like I said, and he told me that basically what it is, he gets his team together, and now he's trying to get them to get their dates coordinated to find out when they can all come. So that's kind of where we are. And I do understand how important it is, and I know that the email said, and I read the agenda abstract, and it said, you know, that other county fire chiefs could come or whatnot, and I did send the email out, and basically what we got back was what we'd already recommended. So, which, you know, you alluded to the amount of times that the funding model's been up, all of those things. So that's why nobody else is here.
I heard from several of the chiefs.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I can't do any more than that. I mean, I'll give you the history if you want me to.
I think we're...
We all got that, right?
We're well aware of the history. All right, anything further for the chief?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, that'll take us to item number 18 for "Consider Two Separate Economic Development Grants for Gulston Technologies." And I will make a motion to approve two separate economic development incentive grants for Gulston Technologies, Project Quantum, and authorize the county manager to approve incentive grant agreements with the company pending legal review as follows. One, Step Three Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount not to exceed $170,500 over a five-year period; and two, Step Three Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount not to exceed $825,000 over a five-year period. We have a motion, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? All right, thank you very much. Gulston, we appreciate what you've done in this community and continue to do, and we look forward to growing with you some more. All right, with that, we'll go to item number 19, "Receive Direction Concerning 2017 General Obligation Bond Issuance."
Yes, Mr. Yates has a short presentation as it relates to this item so that we can receive more direction.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Tonight, we're just before you, if you remember back during our budget discussions, we had a lot of discussion around the bonds that were approved in November of last year, and you approved the debt rate at about three pennies, just over three pennies, and the tax rate. And during that discussion, what we laid out was a plan that would allow us to try to choose our time to go to the market and try to issue the debt when it was most advantageous to the county. And with our finance team, we've been monitoring that situation. So tonight, we're kind of here to give you an update and talk about where we are with the appropriated unissued general obligation bonds, the interest rate environment which we're in right now, comparison of the current market conditions against where we projected or what we thought they would be, some possible savings that come with that, and then our bond project financing strategy. So kind of keep in mind where you're at tonight. Bet about $104 million approved. So that just means that we've committed to do that, and contracts are moving forward with those different components, particularly with the school projects, is my understanding. And largely, at this point, I believe it's with the transportation facility and a couple of other design pieces that are going on there. If you were to compare the interest rate or look at the interest rate environment, we're kind of at a historic low environment right now, meaning that the county can go to the market and get really low, historically low interest rates. If you were to kind of compare where we've been over the last 10 years, the average for the benchmark, which is the Tax exempt AAA mini-benchmark, is about 2.57. Where we're at right now is right about 1.82%. So that's pretty amazing. About 88% of that time, it's been above where we are today. So in looking at that, and working with our FA team, what we're looking at is that the odds of the interest rate getting better than where we are at today, or in the next few months, in the next couple of years, getting a better rate, it seems to be pretty unlikely. So the downside risk, or the risk of losing out on interest rate, is pretty minimal. But the upside risk, or the risk of the rate moving up during that time period, is fairly high. So what we're looking at right now and discussing is that the market is indicating that this is a good time for us to lock in. And these GO bonds are fixed rate, fixed interest rate bonds for a 20-year period. So we believe that, given the market conditions, the indications would be that this is about the best interest rate we'll get through that window. When you compare that to our original estimates, the blue, in this case, are the original estimates, and the orange would indicate what we think we could get at our current or revised, based on the current market condition. We think we could save about $13 million over the life of that debt. And we were, we projected, when we were working through the original projections based on market conditions, and we tried to project out about 24 months into the window. So this would be taking a little earlier than we anticipated, but ensuring that we get that lower rate than we had anticipated. And the ultimate result would be after you issue your second tranche, because we would talk about issuing about half of that at this point, is once you've locked in the lower rate on this tranche, and then you go to the market in another couple of years for the second round of financing, the net result would be the ability to lower that tax rate past where we're at, because we're locking in lower interest rates and lower cost of borrowing than what we had originally anticipated. So it's really, it's a cash play, and it's a mathematical calculation for us, looking at where the upside and downsides are. At this point, what we look to you tonight would be to adopt a resolution, if you would like, that authorizes us to issue the $50 million in general obligation bonds. We've worked with our bond council, knowing that there's some concern over the school bonds and kind of what's going on with the McKibben report and the revised student realignment. And we've worked with our bond council to kind of give us the opportunity to use the proceeds on any of our bond projects. So typically, when you would issue that debt, what you would do is have that, the proceeds of that debt assigned to specific groupings of the projects. So they'd be school bonds, or they'd be library bonds, or they'd be SBCC bonds. In this case, in working with Scott Leo, who's here tonight if you have any questions, we've been able to write the bond resolution, such that it just says for general obligation bonds related to schools, SBCC, or the library project. So if the schools dialed back, for instance, their GO package, then that funding could go to the first SBCC projects, or if SBCC dialed it back, that money would then rotate over to the library. So we've given ourselves maximum flexibility to be able to use that bond proceed anywhere within those GO bonds, or those GO projects as approved by the voters. The next issuance then would come in about the 2020 timeframe, just based on what our cash is, our cash position, plus where we are with the market. I can tell you, if we saw this market in 2019, we'd probably be back here again in the same boat recommending that we move forward with that. So tonight, again, what we're looking is a little bit of direction on how to proceed. I know you have a joint meeting coming up with the Board of Education. The last possible sale date, given that the LGC manages these for us, is at the end of October. But right now, we're on the calendar, so we have reserved that spot, preserving our right to be able to do that. Just a side note, this bond sale will be a little different than our revenue bond sales. This will be a competitive bond sale, which means it'll be put out the day of the deal, and we'll get, we'll receive bids, then we'll know exactly how that'll play out. And also tonight, if you are so inclined for us to move forward, you can go ahead and adopt the bond resolution and the recommended strategies. Or if you need to have more conversation, or you'd like to have additional conversation, that can be done on 10/16. I will note that we're kind of at the point in the process where we have to start spending money to be able to get to the issuance date, and basically our first checks we'd have to write would be to the rating agencies to be able to go ahead and get these bond deals rated in that process. So with that, I will turn it back to you, and if you have any questions, have our FA here also, Jared White, with Stevens, if we have any additional market questions.
Any questions, Chairman? Anyone care to provide any direction tonight, or do you want to wait until October 16?
Any benefit of doing it tonight over October 16?
Tonight, if you were to go ahead and adopt it, this would, it would allow us to go ahead and move forward. I need, if you don't want to adopt the resolution tonight, you could, I just need direction, because like I said, we need to go ahead and start getting it scheduled, the rating agencies, and some other pieces lined up, and those pieces are starting to cost money. So if you, if we were to move forward and get all those scheduled, and then you were to not want to move forward with it, then we would be out, that part of the cost of issuance, because that can only be done at this point in the process. So there's no, I'll flip it, there's no advantage, if you're wanting to move forward, there's no advantage to waiting till the 16th to adopt. If you're not wanting to move forward, we're kind of at that line of demarcation, meeting direction of, because up to this point, it hasn't cost us any resources to continue the process and preserve our ability to issue.
We're looking at saving $13 million.
That's the, based on what we, our analysis and what we'd anticipate, again, market will be the day of the sale, so, but all indications are that we will save significantly, could be as much as $13 million.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion that we provide direction to not to exceed, not to exceed $50 million?
Not to exceed $50 million.
Union County obligation bonds proceeds 2017.
All right, we have a motion, any discussion?
May I just interject? We, if the motion could include adoption of the resolution?
Don't include adoption of the resolution.
So noted. Commissioner Jerry Simpson?
Just a question, what is the likelihood that that information received at that joint meeting with the Board of Education would drastically change direction?
In anticipation kind of of that concern, and looking at that, the $50 million is only about half of what the GO bond is, so you still have about $40 million of SBCC money and about $10 million of the library. So working with bond council and getting that flexibility built into the resolution, let's say the schools came back and said, "We're going to do 30 million, and not the full 50 million." That 20 million of those proceeds, then, we could take that and move that over to the SBCC projects, and we would have the first 20 million for the 40 of the SBCC. So what we would do is adjust the final tranche, or the final funding, downward to be whatever the decision is. But this gives us the first 50 into the bank, because we are fairly certain, between the three groups, we're going to spend $50 million of that GO authorization.
So the 50 million can be used on any of those projects?
That's right. You have maximum flexibility.
All right. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? All right, thank you very much. That will take us to item number 20, appointment of planning board members to plan steering committees and CARPO board.
And Mr. Matthews will briefly explain this item.
Thank you. So it is commonplace for this board to appoint one of your planning board members to serve as an ex officio member for CARPO. And our previous member has resigned, he left the state, and so that, there's a vacancy. And Mr. Russell Wing on our planning board has volunteered to serve as that, but of course, the board would need to appoint him as that. In the past, however, for ad hoc committees for special projects, the planning board has actually appointed their own members. That was in our ordinance, that's how we handled those things. If there was a planning board member who wanted to be on, say, a steering committee for a small area plan, or a steering committee for a corridor study, they would appoint their members. Our current ordinance kind of has a requirement that really the board is the one that makes that appointment. Obviously, it's a difference, but what we have here are two steering committees outside the CARPO, that's a separate issue, but we have a steering committee made up of, for Indian Trail, an Indian Trail Planning Board member, which they will appoint, a Union County Planning Board member, which we need an individual to serve for a small area plan. And then there is a corridor study with Marshall, which Marshall will appoint a member from their planning board, as well as we will need a planning board member to serve on that committee. And the planning board talked, and they have members that have expressed an interest to be appointed to that, but that's what you have here tonight. You have two planning board members who'd like to serve on steering committees, and then a planning board member who'd like to serve as the member, ex officio member for CARPO. I hope I explained that. I know it's complicated, it's different than we normally do things.
All right, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any discussion? Any actions the board wish to take? Commissioner Rushing?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we appoint Robert Traficant, Charles Griffin, and Russell Wing. Do we need to alienate which ones of those?
The only one I would alienate would be the CARPO one.
Okay, and Robert Traficant and Charles Griffin for the steering committee representatives, and Russell Wing as the CARPO representative.
All right. Got a motion, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? All right. That will take us to item number 21, appointment to Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee.
Motion to appoint Dr. Sue Polly.
All right, we have a motion, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? All right. That will take us to item number 21, appointment to Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee.
Motion to appoint Dr. Sue Polly.
All right, we have a motion, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? All right, and that will take us to the county manager's comments.
I have no comments this evening.
All right, very good. Commissioner Jerry Simpson?
Just again, I want to thank Gulston for their interest in Union County and support, and we look forward to hopefully seeing them expand. And I would be remiss if I did not mention those grieving families in Las Vegas, what a tragedy. And also the people in Puerto Rico, what a devastation that storm was. So our hearts and prayers go out to all of those folks.
Commissioner Rushing?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Jerry Simpson's comments.
Mr. Lance Simpson?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Simpson's comments and wish everyone a good day.
Vice Chairman?
And I agree with Commissioner Simpson, and pray for all those involved.
All right, very good, then I have no comments. We will now move into our closed session, which says that...
Move that covered, Dan.
Do we need to restate the motion, or can we just move into closed session?
I would ideally restate it, restate it right here.
All right. We, a motion to go into closed session, consult with attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege in accordance with GS 143-318-11A3, and to establish or instruct public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the amount of compensation and other material terms in employment contract, or proposed employment contract pursuant to GS 143-318-11A5. And three, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee pursuant to GS 143-318-11A6. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? We'll go into closed session. All right, we'll call this meeting back to order, and with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. All in favor? Aye.